I think we are good.
For cameras?
Yes, okay, a secondary thumbs up, alright. I will call this meeting, the study session of the Historical Preservation Commission to order at 6:31. We have a very short agenda today, but I am noticing some new faces from city staff. Just wondering if maybe we want to go around and do some introductions real fast.
Yeah, I'll start. Yeah, I know we've met some of you a couple times, others just recently at the last meeting, mostly because of, you know, some new faces on the, on the commission. So appreciated everyone attending. So I'm Jared Shipman, Planning Manager. We also have our new Director of Community Development, Matt Knight. So Matt came over from a different, different department of the city, so familiar, but in a new role here. Excited to have Matt on board. We also have a new Historic Preservation Planner, Sarah Duesenberry. And so yeah, extremely excited to have Sarah here as well. Already, she's been diving in and doing some research and getting up to speed. And I think most of you know Jessie, Jessie Sheets, who's been kind of filling in on, in the Historic Preservation role until we filled that position. So we're, yeah, excited to still, you know, have Jessie here helping out. So that's kind of the staff perspective. I wasn't sure if you wanted to go around the room before we.
Yeah, this is our second time meeting as a new group, so.
Sure, Jason Smith, new and alternate commissioner.
Robert Honig.
Hi, I'm Jason Henderson, just a commissioner.
Colleen Amira.
Paige Alcorn.
Amy Fisher.
Kim Field.
Lindsay Britter, also new.
Alright, well, oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I was gonna turn it over to Sarah.
Same thing.
If you're, give your rest.
Yeah, I was gonna say, without further ado, we'll move on with the, our study session topic today.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have Lindsay Flowelling here from History Car Colorado, the State CLG Coordinator. Just to kind of provide some information, we had asked to maybe talk a little bit about some of our pertinent projects that we have coming up. So some of the kind of maybe overlay ideas or things like that for, say, Littleton Boulevard. And then also with the potential during the preservation plan here in the new future, just any kind of ideas with that. And then also just, I think broadly talking about some of the CLG and kind of what that means in the state and for Littleton. But I'll hand it over to you and we can start.
Okay, great. Thanks for having me, Ms. Sarah Senna, Lindsay Flowelling. My job title is Preservation Planner, but my main role at History Colorado is to work with the certified local governments. And I brought to hand out just an overview of the CLG program and then that way, you know, kind of keep track of what I'm blathering on about. And then I did prepare some notes on preservation plans and overlay districts to share with you guys and hear what you are thinking of as far as those things go. But I said, just to get started on the CLG program. It's a partnership program between the National Park Service, the State Historic Preservation Office, which is History Colorado in Colorado, and the local governments. And essentially, your local government preservation program is certified by the Park Service and by your State Historic Preservation Office's meeting state and federal parameters for preservation programs. And that opens you up for incentives and also guidance and resources that we provide at the state level. And then you're in this network of other certified local governments across the state and across the country. Let's see, I didn't change on the sheet, but there's actually 67 CLGs in Colorado currently. So fix that. And then about 2,100 nationwide. So we have a pretty robust program for a state of our population size. Yep, and Littleton's been a CLG since 1995, so the program really started in 1985, but that's pretty long. One of the biggest benefits of the CLG program are its CLG grants. Our office gets some funding from the National Park Service and we're required to sub-grant 10% of that to our CLGs every year. So it's money that can't be spent on anything else, it has to go to our certified local governments. And then in Colorado, we're really lucky, we have the State Historical Fund. And because of that, the State Historical Fund actually provides the match for the CLG grants so that the CLGs can apply for no-match grants every year. And I'll talk about those a little bit more in a minute. CLGs are also eligible for National Park Service grants. Since the Park Service is, you know, the head of preservation at the federal level, it's not just looking at their, you know, national parks, they also provide funds for preservation activities across the country. So they do some physical construction grants, but also like survey and designation grants as well. Those can be a little bit more challenging to apply for because their whole grant stock-up system is quite a barrier, but CLGs are eligible and I'd love it if some of our CLGs were able to get access to those funds. Another benefit for the CLG program are eligibility for state commercial and residential tax credits for your locally landmarked properties and contributing properties in your local historic districts. Those are currently at 25% of rehabilitation expenditures. And you guys actually review the residential tax credits. So if you have property owners who are undergoing rehabilitation projects on their residential properties, they can just go to your staff and it's a sort of one-stop shop for review and then like put that into the computer system and I make sure that you actually calculated 25% correctly and then they get their tax credits back. For commercial credits, it's 25% on the first $2 million of the project and then 20% on the last $1 million essentially. And those are all processed through our office and the Office of, oh wait, the Office of Economic Development and International Trade at the state level. There's a few other benefits. I do a monthly webinar series. This month, we're doing a joint webinar with Colorado Main Street on May 30th. And then over the summer, I'm doing like specific topics for discussion in preservation. So in June, we're going to do a discussion on LGBTQ+ resources in our CLGs. July, we're going to do sugar beet resources in our more agricultural and rural communities. And then August will be a discussion on resources related to our Latino, Hispanic, and Chicano communities across the state. So if you're interested in any of those, please feel free to join. I normally send out an email at the beginning of the month to your staff members that describes, you know, when each of those webinars is coming up. We also provide scholarships for the Saving Places Conference every year. And then there should be a little bit of funding for the NAPC Forum as well, which is coming up over the summer. On the flip side of that, there are responsibilities to being in this certified local government program. So the first thing is to make sure that you're following your own preservation ordinance. So part of my job is to just make sure everybody follows their own rules that they set for themselves and end up answering a lot of questions on, like, what does my ordinance say? Which I'm happy to do, but that's, you know, the most important thing is that you're actually following your own rules so that the public knows what to expect from your preservation program. Establish and maintain a commission, send meeting minutes into our office, provide for adequate public participation, have a system of survey and inventory. So you should be, you know, having some kind of regular survey either of, you know, parts of the city that you've never looked at before or resurveying places that may have changed or faced development over time. At least one person on your commission needs to attend a training every year. It could be any like webinar or conference related to preservation. Submit an annual report. Your staff takes care of that, but those are due every November 1st. And then every four years, there's a CLG evaluation and this is your year. So part of that is me attending a meeting of the HPC and then I'll have a meeting with staff just to talk about your preservation program and kind of looking both back and forward into what you're planning in the future. And then I look over all of your annual reports and meeting minutes from the past four years and just make sure that you're still fitting within the federal and state's parameters for the CLG program. So that's the CLG program in a nutshell. Did you guys have any questions about that? So then I thought I'd quickly talk about some preservation incentives. Like I said, there's the CLG Grant Program. That covers sort of administrative projects for your local government. It's for up to $25,000, so it's not a huge amount of money, but that helps to cover things like surveys, preservation plans, survey plans, design guidelines. You could do like ordinance updates, education and outreach projects. So things that like specifically help your local government's preservation program. And those are due every January. The application comes out every October. So if you're looking at doing a preservation plan, that would be a good option. It is a no-match grant, but considering the size of Littleton, it probably will cost more than $25,000 for a preservation plan. But Sarah actually just got a grant for North Wind, so she's experienced in the application for, for a survey plan for this coming year.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Last year, I, I remember there was kind of a mad rush to get our application in for grant funding for this year. Was that a thing or not? Did we make it or not?
Was that for the State Historical Fund?
Yep.
It was in November, right?
I think it was sometime in the fall.
Late in the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is a separate grant program. So the CLG Grant Program is just for CLGs and we have the no-match grants. But since your project would cost more, it like, it maybe doesn't really matter which one you choose to apply for other than competitiveness may be a factor depending on what you're going for. But the State Historical Fund is another pool of grant funding for Colorado. They have about $11 million a year to give out. They mostly fund like physical construction type projects, but they also fund preservation planning and survey, historic context studies and things like that. Those are due every October 1st and April 1st. Each year, they also have a letter of intent process, so you kind of have to plan a little bit farther in advance. But that's definitely, you know, you guys are eligible to apply for those funds as well. Yes.
Is it 11 million annually or, or is it, how does that work?
Yeah, it's about 11 million annually.
Okay, so you're applying for half on each one?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and it's not quite half, but yeah, they, they have some non-competitive grants, so they like set aside funding for those as well. But they have, so each grant round, they have a mini-grant pool, basically, that's for up to $50,000. And then they have a general grant pool that's for up to $250,000. And for preservation planning type projects, you would have a match of 25%.
From what I've seen too, it's best to plan ahead and get the application in early because then the State Historic Preservation Office can actually help you with the application. If they see some deficiencies or, you know, an area that might need more attention, they'll reach out and say, you know, we can tweak this a little or have you thought about this idea? You should maybe incorporate this. And then that way you have some feedback that you can apply to the grant and make the grant even more attractive looking.
Yeah, we definitely do draft review. For the CLG grants, I review drafts that had come in by early December since, like, I don't want it to hit up against the holidays with, you know, I don't want people to be writing their grant just all over Christmas and New Year break. But, and then the State Historical Fund will actually review drafts up to two weeks before, which I feel like is very busy for them, but yeah.
But if I understood your question correctly, you were remembering that we applied for something, is that correct?
I don't know if we applied. I think there was like, it's not, what I recall is the same as we were sitting down and we were talking about this and filling it out, but it sounds like it wasn't submitted.
There wasn't one for a CLG grant?
I think, yeah, we might be talking about Geneva Lodge and, you don't think that's what it was?
It's a Geneva Lodge. I, I remember it was a big fire drill about the CLG.
Yeah, was it this annual report though?
Was it November?
It, it may well have been.
It may have just been like our annual report.
Yeah.
That we made it.
So we did, did we make it? Did we do it?
Oh, yeah, you guys.
Okay.
Fly and colors.
What grade did we get?
Not overly concerned grade. Which not everybody, you know, achieves that. So, but yeah, you could apply for State Historical Fund grants or CLG grants. And then the other incentives, like I said, Park Service grants are available. Those are for, often for up to like $75,000 for a survey type projects, but you need to have a national register angle in there so that, and it depends, they've got several different grant programs that you could look at. And then I talked about the state and residential tax credits for your property owners. And then if they're on the national register and it's an income generating, like, commercial property, they could also layer on the federal tax credits, which are straight 20% of rehabilitation expenditures that they could add to the state tax credits of 25%. So, you know, almost getting 50% of their cost back in tax credits. Any questions about those programs? So next I thought we could talk about preservation plans. I was looking back at my notes and I saw, actually two years ago, I was talking to Andrea about it. So I'm excited that you're still interested in doing a preservation plan and trying to, you know, have more definite direction for your program leading to the future. Do you think it would be a grant project or something that you would try to develop in-house?
We like grants. Everybody likes grants.
I think we've talked about a little bit of both though, like maybe we can use our internal resources, but I think we understand that we would have to maybe get a grant to help with surveying and. You know, we often just see a consultant conducting like one public meeting at the beginning of a project and one public meeting at the end of a project. But I would love it if it were, you know, more thoughtful outreach to try to actually get people to respond and give, give their input so that it's really a community preservation plan since, you know, the preservation and the historic fabric of the community really helps make the backbone of the community today. So it would be great to have more creative ways of reaching out for, for the project.
Now, I think our preservation plan, if I'm not mistaken, is, has not been updated in quite a while. And the, the last iteration had a lot of things that needed to be fixed. And there are lists, you know, we have sat down in several meetings and gone through all of the, the things that needed to be fixed, added, literally by line item. So all of that material is out there. But it's been, you know, the project has always been, well, we'll get to it next year.
Right.
We'll do that, you know. And, and the same with our ordinance. We're, we're in the same bucket with the preservation ordinance. It needs to be, there are some gaps in it, shall we say.
Yeah. Well, what, what areas do you see gaps in the preservation plan? Or like what, what projects are you envisioning wanting to take on in the next, like, five to eight years?
Can we talk about the Midbar Mile? But I think the gaps that we run into is there's a lot of like ambiguous words. It's not concretely defined. So we're trying to honor what is desired from historic, but also, you know, the people who are applying for things find loopholes that aren't clearly outlined. So there's a, I mean, just understanding what the normal gauge of how to interpret things appropriately in government writing is a little confusing.
Are they finding loopholes in like design guidelines or just?
I think there's, I don't know if I want to say, like, I don't want to put like a downward, like a negative word on it, but there's so many things that are happening and changing to make things greener or better. And it's like, and then like fire marshals wanting safety codes. So like, we're in a position of not knowing what our firm guidelines are, I think. Would that be a fair statement? Support me, guys.
No, I think that, that's, that's a very good point. And it's, it's like, how, how does historic preservation play with?
The fire marshal.
Building codes, yeah.
Yeah, modern building codes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like modern requirements.
We have run into, into those issues from ADA to, to actually, several years ago, you know, gutters, which would not be necessary on, you know, craft and style.
So we've heard ADA really recently.
What's that?
And, and the fire marshal and even the glass from the Penny Robbins building that like broke everywhere. I mean, it's just like, what's our line in this?
Well, it sounds like you almost need someone that has more of like a, well, obviously building code, but like legal expertise and how to incorporate those types of things into your regulatory structure. But then I wonder if you would also want to look at like policies related to sustainability and preservation.
And how to like abide with like the changing world.
Yes.
Yeah. Cause I don't know, that Black House thing, weird, because they wanted a bigger door put on by the fire marshal and it was like, what do we honor? The fire marshal or the door frame that's historic? You know, it, it gets, people are, I don't know. It would be a lot easier if we had a clear understanding of what that means and what our responsibility is in that light.
Right, and there, there can be some like leeway with building codes and things through the international existing building code, but.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It's kind of hard to say unless there's like a specific, you know, the specific buildings that you're applying it to.
Okay.
But yeah.
So maybe it's kind of, and for, to your point, I think maybe it's understanding a little bit, kind of that existing of where does building code align with?
Right.
Kind of moving forward, like to your point with the Black House, like who does what? So maybe it's less about necessarily changes to code on that, but maybe just having the information and that clarification of when does this one supersede the other?
That would be incredible.
I'm just applying it correctly.
That would be.
That was the issue.
Yeah.
Just to make sure I understand kind of what it was.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, what we can do too as, as staff, which we won't, you know, questions will arise at, at meetings that we may not have foreseen and may not always be prepared for. But, you know, for instance, the, the door questions, that's been a couple different, different locations. And we can try to do a better job of coordinating with building beforehand, coordinating with buyer. So as long as we identify these items early enough, we can then try to do some research beforehand and, and that way in a staff report, we can, we hopefully can come to you and say, hey, you know, we feel that this door is historic. We think that it's a really character-defining feature of the structure. We did reach out to, you know, fire and, and building and this is what they had to say. And so hopefully, you know, we can, as staff can, can do a little bit more on that as well. Because.
Oh, maybe even include some of that guidance in the staff report?
Yeah.
That would be cool.
To read before the, before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be handy to, to have where, where foreseeable and where possible.
Right, yeah, when it's burnable.
There's always something that pop up.
And then as part of a grant project, you could also ask for funds for commission member training from specific, you know, consultants or, or people who might be experts in different areas. So you could build in, you know, their fees and travel into your grant request.
That would be really cool.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. I mean, we all come here with our own kind of unique expertise and we rely on each other a lot, but to have some formal training, I think, would be particularly helpful.
I know Crested Butte is doing a very large planning project right now, but they, part of that was doing like four webinars. Some, I think a couple targeted toward their commission members and some toward like property owners. But that was part of their State Historical Fund grant.
That, that would be great to have both commission members and property members.
Yeah. And, and one of the things, you know, we're talking about an ordinance and a preservation plan. And we are not the only community in America that needs an ordinance and a preservation plan. And there's no need to reinvent the wheel. There are lots of them out there. And we've talked about, you know, picking the good templates to use and actually using them. An ordinance that have already been vetted as far as, you know, what stands up legally. And, you know, it's like, we do not have to keep reinventing them.
Yeah.
Towns of our size and age.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, every CLG has an ordinance, so there's sixty seven out there.
Who's your favorite?
Good question.
Who'd use theirs?
I mean, yeah, they're all tailored to the local community. So, you know, some are more highly regulatory and some are more like, well, technically you have to come in for design review, but we're not going to enforce it. So it's more of an honorary program and that might work better, you know, especially in the eastern plains communities.
Oh, yeah.
Where it's really more about just trying to get people access to incentives and things, not, not trying to like put the hammer down on actually keeping the properties to look perfectly.
We're rather formal here, so, so yes.
Yes, as are, you know, most communities in sort of metro area, yeah, but.
A mile, formal.
Um.
Have a leg.
Yeah, we shouldn't be informal. I mean, we are a, 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 you know, we're a city. We've got a historic district.
Oh, no question. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Very intentional.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and you, you don't have the same issues with like vacancy of, you know, sixty percent of your properties since that some of the, um, the eastern plains communities have. Yeah, so I think, and then we also have a model ordinance that you can take a look at as well, so.
That would be cool.
Yeah, the state has, so Northland, we updated our ordinance last year in that process. The state does have a pretty in-depth model code and a basic one, and those are good starting points as well.
Yeah, and I always say they're like everything but the kitchen sink. So you can like look through them and pick out what's actually useful to you. So they're helpful in that way.
And also just regarding training, every year we have the opportunity to go to CPI. And very few of us take advantage of that. And it's a wonderful conference and it's wonderful training.
Why is it?
Well, it's costly.
I think it's normally.
Yeah.
We, we have scholarships to.
Yeah.
We only have one this year, right, is CPI?
No, it's.
Um, it's a conference. It's in Boulder. It's called Saving Places.
It goes around the city.
Yeah, it's in Colorado Springs next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's in February.
Yeah, yeah, normally in February.
It's a preservation conference. Then people come in from all over the state, all over the country really. And there are, are sessions where you can hear about, you know, what New Orleans is doing about this or.
Chicago.
Yeah, or Chicago. How are they handling that problem? And also there's in-depth training sessions. You could, you can literally spend half a day in a Windows seminar where you learn more than you have ever. Yeah, yeah, and, and just dealing with that. And, and there's, there are also sessions on, just where preservationists from various cities put up case studies and say, well, what would you have done? You know, do you think we should do this or, or do you think we should do that? And, and it's fun to see that kind of back and forth and, and you learn so much. And the seminars actually that the state shippo, that, the office of historic preservation does, they're, they're really good and, and they're all on Zoom. They're super easy to download and, and attend. And other shippos in other states, Utah actually has wonderful, you know, Ask the Architect and, you know, diff- different trainings. Because they're, they're dealing with a, a lot of the same issues that we are in, in their cities, like Salt Lake City or, you know, towns, not, not the ruins, but in, in the actual cities. And they're, they're quite interesting. They're all free. They're all on, on Zoom. So they all take an hour, so.
That's interesting. Would the, would the cost of a conference be something that could be folded into application for a grant or how does that? For the Saving Places Conference, we offer scholarships for that every year. This year we gave out like eighteen thousand dollars in scholarships for CPI. And then if you wanted to go to like a different conference, like I was saying, so the National Alliance for Preservation Commissions Conference is coming up this summer. It's in Florida, so it's kind of, it'll be expensive to get there. But that could be something if you wanted to apply for that in the future, you could apply for a grant for that. Or the same organization, the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions does what's called Camp. I'm hoping that we'll be able to, like from our office, have camp associated with Saving Places in January. But there's some funding. Basically, I need to have somebody, a CLG request the funding so that I can like funnel it towards this. So we'll get that sorted out, but that's super helpful. I went to, we did it every other year before COVID and then haven't since then. But I went to the one in twenty seventeen and it's just like helps you look at your ordinance in a new light and, and think about your preservation projects. And we'll have some, like a session on disaster and resiliency and, and some other things as well. So that would be hopefully something that we'll be able to put on as a state. But you could also get the camp trainers to come and work with you directly as well if you wanted to.
I've worked with them in a different community and they're fantastic. In grad school, I was like a resident or TA for the NAPC. It was housed at UGA. But they're a really good organization and it's professionals in the field, other ones that are the trainers. So they really know a lot of what they're talking about. And you can partner with like other communities too to kind of help cover costs if you ever wanted to do your own kind of thing. We did that back in May and we just had other communities with us, but they're a really, really great resource.
CPI also does a really unique thing. They call it On the Road. And it's an additional conference in another smaller city or an area in the mountains that has specific preservation concerns. I know they've been in the San Luis Valley and then this year it's Steamboat Springs. So that's another kind of continuing education conference type thing you can attend as well, if that sounds interesting. And then with the scholarships as well, there is a little bit of a follow-up you have to do. You do need to submit kind of an essay or a review saying what talks and topics you participated in. And, you know, kind of like a survey, how did you like the conference and things like that, just to make sure that you went.
And in, in my experience with the, with the scholarship, I ran it through the city. So you, you know, would work with, the city would work with the, the commission members that wanted to go, et cetera. And even if, you know, if, if we don't receive the scholarship, et cetera, the city does have some funds for training, et cetera. So, but once again, we, we would still need some follow-up on that. We would need some receipts, et cetera. If, you know, and, and we'll keep you up to date as to how we progress. Because if I'm not mistaken, it comes out in November or December, the registration opening.
Yeah, usually I try to get the scholarship form out like the week after they announce.
Okay.
The registration opening, but yeah, it's normally like November.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for the, the early February conference.
So, so we can always be your, you know, point of contact there and, and help you through. And, you know, if, if you're interested, please let us know kind of early and often and we're happy to, to facilitate.
And I believe with the Saving Places, there is a digital component. So where you can, if you can't make it down to Colorado Springs, there's, not every session, but there are a lot of sessions that are streamed live. So, and it is a reduced fee for that one. It's the, so that is always an option too because it is a little bit of travel time.
I've been told their platform works very well, so of like some other conferences.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've gone pretty much every year.
Used to.
And it's so easy. I mean, you know, the scholarship is provided to the city.
It doesn't cover hotels.
What's that?
Doesn't cover hotels. So you're donating a hotel room to the city of Wilton.
I didn't stay in a hotel. I'm getting to that.
You have to drive.
If, if the conference is in Denver, you just go downtown Denver.
Yeah, but it's in Boulder.
Yeah, but last year I zoomed it. I did the digital and it was like a hundred bucks. And the, you know, city pays for it. You hand in your receipts and it's like that. And it, it was great. I got to sit in my living room without having to sit on the traffic up to Boulder.
So the, the hotel is a, is a good point. You know, I don't know off the top of my head what our, our policy is for commission members. I should, I think that some items are, are covered. The issue with Boulder was, you know, and Jesse and I attended, that it was too close. So because we have a fifty mile, I, you know, driving distance, yeah, from, from here.
It's thirty-seven miles from here.
Not necessarily from our, from our mi- or from our homes, but from here.
Yeah, you sent that in an email.
And, and so that one, we, you know, we commute up each day because that was the.
So I mean, you're, you're entitled to whatever policy you want, but I don't think it's reasonable to expect somebody to commute to Boulder for free.
I understand, I understand.
That's fair. That's fair.
And guess where I was going was that if you did want to attend the next one, we may be able to, to help out with, with, you know, hotel.
We'll see.
As you mentioned, it's still a volunteer event. So, you know, it's, it's not a, you know, a, a paid date down there. I understand that perspective. And that's why sometimes the, the.
Yeah, the Zoom thing's a lot easier.
It was fantastic.
I don't like people that.
It is hilarious. We live in a world where you Zoom because something's too close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Times are changing. Well, crazy.
I appreciate that. That's really cool.
So I was wondering about other priorities that you might have for your preservation plan, like potential areas of survey that you haven't looked at or that would need to be re-surveyed? Are there places that have, you know, turned fifty years of age since your previous planning efforts that you know about and, and would like to see surveyed? Or are there like specific themes you'd like to look at? Like mid-century auto tourism or, you know, sites related to like auto travel, things like that? Or underrepresented community sites or anything like that that you'd like to see as part of your preservation efforts?
I know I've done a number of iterations, like certain iterations of a survey. But I think it's always been in the back of all of our minds that, that we've got a number of properties who were built like exactly forty-five years ago or whatever, that we, they're, they're just not at all on our radar. You know, maybe putting some thought into doing some kind of a survey for more recent buildings.
Now, when you look at Littleton's history, it, it, it's a post-world war town, you know? And there are a lot of neighborhoods with wonderful mid-century resources that are just now becoming eligible.
Thirty-fifty.
You know, it's.
And so there are lots of neighborhoods that need surveying.
I'm so sorry. I didn't interrupt you. I was thinking of Kalina's point about the, the Midmont Mile. There's got to be a project. I don't know what the project is. I know we've admired, admired sort of the issue. I don't know what the product, project is, but there's got to be something we can take advantage of there.
I'm having a hard time reconciling last month's meeting when we spent the study session on the survey that the city is going to do, issue an RFP and likely hire. And now this conversation where we're really not like lining, am I missing something or?
No, we don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, it's my alone to.
Who's we? So, so a little, a little bit of background on, on a couple of these, you know, planning efforts. I guess three main items. One is we've heard, we, we've been talking about a historic preservation plan overall for a while now.
For the city?
For, yeah, for citywide historic preservation plan, absolutely. So we did end up delaying that multiple times. We did have some staff changes, which were, it was unfortunate that we, that we ended up delaying that. That is still something that we would, would prefer to do. We did take a bit of a broader plan to city council in regards to a bunch of code updates and long-range vision plans, et cetera. And they had indicated that they thought that the Littleton Boulevard, what we talked about last month, was an important piece. And so they felt that that should currently kind of be the priority. And so that's why we're, we're looking at doing more of that subarea plan and having a, a large historic component to it. And then the, the third item is we did receive some money from, is it Arts and Culture here in the city? Grants to get iPads and to get a software that we could, and we're gonna have some more conversations about this, but go out and do some, some surveying as well. So we're, and we're hoping that, that all of you are interested in, in participating in that. I'll be honest, I don't know all the details about that. I haven't kind of been brought up to speed on exactly what that entails. But Sarah and I are gonna dig into that and, and potentially Jesse. And we're going to have some future conversations in regards to it, so. So we've got a few things and the, to move kind of once again still closer to, or prepping potentially for that broader city Littleton Historic Plan.
So the answer to your question is yes.
Great. Do you think you would have them like doing windshield survey type activities, not actual forms?
I believe that's the case, yeah. And that, this is where I'm not as well versus I should be. But we, we do have a software designated. And so it would be, I think, more of a windshield survey where you would stand there. And, and I think the software kind of asks you, you know, what do you see as a, do you see kind of hopefully an image or something? Is this kind of a, and I, I haven't seen the tutorial on it. So I hope I'm not leading everybody in the wrong direction. But to my nonsense, it'd be a little less formal.
Yeah, so that, that could help with like future survey planning.
And I think a component of it too is to kind of bring in the community as well, if I'm not mistaken. And kind of a little bit of a kind of that kind of crowdsourcing idea that they do sometimes with survey. And I think that was kind of part of it as well as understand the commission give them the resources, but also is there something, a community engagement kind of element to it, I think, too.
Yeah, so when we're talking about these various surveys, there's one that the city's doing for a larger plan. This iPad-driven survey is more of a volunteer with a layer in with this. Would it inform something different? Is it part of, of maintaining our status as a CLG? That was one of the items listed. And, and then thirdly, would this other survey be a third survey? Or would it somehow tie into these two that we're talking about?
I think it should tie into it.
Yeah, so I, again, I think it was supposed to, new knowledge. I think it was supposed to kind of aid in the process of the preservation plan, of kind of understanding, okay, what are some of the resources we have? Can we tap into the potential of our residents? They know a lot about the history and what's going on. So it's kind of a component of, let's do some reconnaissance survey or windshield survey of the areas that we know may not have been surveyed yet or could using up, use update. What are the resources that we have that we can do this in-house? Can we open it up crowdsourcing? If we are wanting to do a full-blown kind of survey plan of kind of redoing the entire city kind of thing, that may be something that kind of can come out of a preservation plan or start to go into informing it to an extent, to kind of.
Is that what the city's doing though? Is requesting a proposal for the, the larger survey?
Not yet.
No, we're, we're requesting a proposal for Littleton Boulevard. But then we've already got some funding and for the windshield surveys that would hopefully, yep, precisely. That would hopefully help guide us to potentially locations where additional surveying would, would need to take place that, and or go into some data for a future historic plan.
And when we talk about.
You're good, you're good.
The preservation plan, there's this one that's well-funded and it's an intention of the city to ensure that there's completion and it sounds like it's had some little roadblocks, but smooth sailing ahead. What are we doing? Is it separate than that?
So the, so the historic plan, the revised one, you know, like there's, there's an older one that's, that's out there. But the one that we would like to do in, in future years, it would be, you know, immediately. We have to plan out the timing of it. But, you know, you as the Historical Preservation Commission would certainly be stakeholders in that. And oftentimes you, oftentimes you would review a final draft and, and recommend, you know, approval of it or, or changes to it, et cetera. So you would definitely be an integral part of, of that effort.
So are we thinking we need to have one of our own to come?
I have a question. When was the last time? I have a question. When was the last time that we did a historic preservation survey? Are we spelled, do we have a date on that?
Ninety-seven and two thousand and one, right?
Yeah, the the latest survey is the Littleton Boulevard survey, which we talked about.
It's the book, right? Yeah.
And that's a good survey and that doesn't, it hasn't changed that much, doesn't need to be redone.
Well, it's, I feel like it's changed a lot. We have Littleton Brewing, we have a whole bunch of stuff that was taken down. I mean, I don't mean in a bad way, I'm just saying there's been changes because we have an.
But incremental changes though.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's better, yeah.
And I think that the survey that, you know, this quote windshield survey, this idea was implemented in Denver probably, oh gosh, five years ago, six years ago, and it was incredibly successful. We learned about it at CPI and it's met extensively with the folks at Denver who were were doing this. And and it was, I think the the, it it was on a simple tablet, it wasn't even an iPad. And they had volunteers going around and and, you know, there was a set lexicon in the in the tablet and they were checking boxes. And they could do blocks in a day. And Chris Geddes, you probably know Chris Geddes.
Yeah, she's now the Historic Preservation Officer in Aurora.
Yeah, and she she worked on that particular project in Denver for several years.
Yeah, they're still going.
And it's 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 a fantastic tool and a fantastic survey and and, you know, we were trying to get it implemented in Littleton. Cause it's it's, it it's very, very straightforward. And they've they've been incredibly successful with it.
I'm glad you brought that up because that's where this whole idea sprang forth was from Chris.
Yes.
And her involvement in that and that was kind of the whole impetus for the whole tablet idea.
Yeah.
For the iPads. So now that we have that funding in place, I think some of the points you made are great because there are ways within like mapping and GIS where you can input data and you could select year ranges. You know, maybe think about forty-five to fifty years of when buildings were built and then create a map showing where those locations are in the city and maybe survey something like that, like preparing for what's coming next in, you know, the next five years. Where where do our eyes need to be at, what's on the radar for preservation moving forward in Littleton? And maybe kind of narrowing the scope with a windshield survey like that would be helpful.
Yeah, and this, and it's, you know, you can do it volunteers and it's a lot of fun for people and it, talk about community involvement.
I'm sure HLI would love to be involved in it too.
And I think just learning about people who've lived in the community for a long time, I mean, I my mom's lived here for sixty years and every street you walk down, she can tell you lots of stuff about every building. And so I think just that kind of stuff too would be really interesting to gather and yeah, have it have it saved somewhere.
I'm sure Chris would be happy to talk to anybody about Discover Denver and that whole process.
Oh, yes.
And, yeah, I was just thinking, you know, if you're looking forward like five years, you'd wanna look at properties built before nineteen eighty, basically, but I'm sure that's a huge number of properties here at Littleton.
Yeah, often survey programs, correct me if I'm wrong, do like everything that's at least thirty years old, kind of to that point of. Yeah.
Horizon.
Right, the priority obviously is like the closer to fifty, but I think sometimes is thirty is actually a a number as well that gets used a lot.
I mean, ideally, if you have the funding to look at that.
That's the key.
Yeah. But I think, Lizzie, to your point too, so we've got this like bigger preservation plan, but I think one thing that we've gotten away from just as a group over the years is a work plan specifically for historic preservation. Like, I have all these ideas here and I think it goes into kind of training as well. I mean, we're a newer group and I, you know, there's always something that you can learn. So potentially like, maybe maybe this can be another study session of just a brainstorm of work plan, things that we wanna learn more about, how can we get more involved just with the community and get ourselves out there.
I also think too, once we do the preservation plan, that's also a really great tool to inform that work program, to kind of say, okay, let's look at kind of a strategic plan for the next couple of years, what's in that preservation plan? What are those objectives? What are those kind of recommendations and things that like feel feasible within that? I think to your point, go ahead and do, we can go ahead and do that and kind of look at that work program, understand and maybe part of the work program is the preservation plan right now. But those, I think that's a great idea to kind of provide a little bit of that structure and guidance. And then once you get the preservation plan, kind of to your point of like, where does that ownership lie? Is it is a city document that we do that, so the ownership is kind of citywide in a way, but that plan can really become y'all's playbook of saying, this is, this is the stuff that we wanna move forward with. This has community input as well as kind of best practice input. It makes sense for Littleton. Let's start pulling those kind of actionable items and things that we can start working on and really kind of provide that structure and really kind of keep moving forward and growing preservation within Littleton.
So with that being said, because like our meetings are set and determined on it, can we ask that that be added to our next meeting so that we can start addressing that? Because it feels like this is a wonderful idea, let's do it in June. Like, let's put it on the docket.
Yeah, so, you know, with, yeah, that's the the direction, which I don't think we, you know, I don't think staff would push back on at all. You know, we normally have our regular meeting, but then we can have a study session afterwards. So we don't have to have one or the other, we can, we can roll out and do do both in in an evening, so.
Maybe it's done also kind of in stages too, doesn't have to be completely done in one evening. It could be kind of your, a point of adding on to kind of think about all of y'all's time as well. And then maybe it is something that like over a series of meetings, we can kind of focus on, to your point, is there, are there training opportunities that we wanna look at? Is there ordinance updates? Like, what are those kind of things? And then you can kind of start to categorize them too is always helpful. I like some fresh shoes.
Very tight.
Fun fact. But I like putting something that great in it, so.
So could one of you two, cause it sounds like you two are totally in sync. Could you re-articulate what we would be discussing in that study session? Cause I'm hearing a lot of ideas thrown around and they're all good, but they don't all mesh.
Yeah, so I.
I think we're talking past each other a lot.
Sure.
Just for, to be crystal clear, for staff and for your colleagues, what are you suggesting we set as a study topic conversation?
So I honestly, I think it's gonna have to be pretty broad, the first one, and just a brainstorm of ideas of what is possible, what we could do, things that we are interested in or that we need training on. And just kind of get it out there to see and as a group, talk about what do we want our priorities to be and where can we make an impact?
So almost like strategic planning on the commission's part, not necessarily a sta- staff-presented, staff-driven
Right.
Set of information.
Yeah, but and then it it may have to be.
So so I think, and Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, I think knowing what the what the commission wants to accomplish is is great for staff. And then we can take, and this is one of the reasons why I think it's good to have multiple discussions about this, is we can go back and do a little research and figure out what kind of resources we have, what we can, you know, potentially propose as something we can do in the short term versus something that may, might be longer term. So, but, you know, I, the the brainstorming portion of it is that absolutely, we can, we can certainly have that conversation.
And it can be that informal and sort of agenda-less?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, a study session can be pretty, pretty broad, so.
So when I've done this before with a previous commission, we kind of broke it down into just different kind of subject categories and went through multiple study sessions. And we just kind of focused on each kind of category. I think we had general preservation, so it would be more like the physical and the design guidelines and the surveys that we were wanting to do. We did kind of more of the public outreach education, like what are the things that we can do to start getting the community involved? And then more of the internal education in terms of what training we're doing, how are we engaging with other commissions or city council that could be pertinent? And kind of broke things down that way and then just put, it was a five-year plan, so kind of put years when we think this stuff may or may not happen. And so it can be relatively simple, but it could be something that we structure and say, hey, training is a big thing. What is what is involved in training? What, is it kind of personal for the commission? Is it a a personal or kind of an internal to other commissions and that relationship? Is it helping the city start, residents starting to understand their educational opportunities, et cetera? So we can definitely break it down by kind of a category type thing to kind of get that not going so into the weeds or all over the place. But maybe that first session is a good one to kind of say, what are those topic areas that you are wanting to kind of, A, it makes sense for y'all and that seem actionable and interesting? Cause that's the other thing too, it's a volunteer commission, so we want this to just still be as exciting and interesting as possible for you guys, so things that you are interested in working on. And then, as I said, it can start to alter and shift. Once you have a preservation plan in place, you can start looking more concretely at kind of these things.
So they kind of work, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so like we have our work plan as a commission and then the city has a preservation plan and they kind of work alongside each other and hopefully, once they're both created, then you can mesh them together to make sure that they're working together.
When you say we have a work plan, you're saying this session would be a conversation about developing.
What the work plan is, yes. We do not have one currently for the commission, right?
Does the city have the plan?
Or I guess what is the timeline for the city's preservation plan?
Yeah.
Sounds very thick.
Yeah.
Yeah, when when you, when having place by.
Can we use the old one?
Well, I'll be, I'll be honest, it is a little vague right now.
Can we get a copy of that to our emails? I got the old plan so we can bounce it.
And maybe even just see what it looks like. I think maybe a lot of us haven't even seen what a potential preservation plan looks like.
And I don't know if you.
Yeah.
Should you, should you be in here?
I think so.
Are you kidding?
We're trying to figure this out and I'm like, are we doing something bad?
She wants the good grade still.
I still want the A plus.
We're totally.
Are at least the not concerned.
I'm just concerned whether the commissions aren't actually meeting or there's like two people that show up and they don't have a quorum every single time, so you guys are fine.
And for defense, half of us are new.
Yeah.
So we're just hazing the new ones.
And and I do think the training's a a good item. I know
Yeah.
Prior, uh, prior experience, I've had some guest speakers that have come and and provided context just on, you know, the Secretary of Interior's guy, just kind of the the hierarchy.
I did that to him.
Yeah, exactly. Did that, so, so, yeah, so it's kind of like, yep, this is kind of how this runs and gave a, what I felt was a very comprehensive overview for a, for someone who, you know, is a beginner to to a commission like this. And to me that, I know I learned things on that, that's not, you know, hundred percent my background either. So I really appreciated that conversation.
But you guys also had the city attorney come and talk on that same meeting, which I thought was really great. But, I don't know if you guys have a like annual city attorney?
We met with the rest.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, we did, definitely more on the procedural basis than on a specific code.
I mean, we've had people from, what's the Mid-Mond Architecture Group? They came and ta- told us about Sternberg.
Oh, yeah.
Like, those people were really cool.
The one that drives the Cadillac.
Yeah.
They perked my perky.
I would say even someone who knows like a lot about the Littleton guidelines, cause those are very specific as well. Like, we've had public commenters and like, oh my gosh, like, could you come and just talk to us about the guidelines? Cause they, I mean, people who develop those guidelines on this commission still live in Littleton. So, you know, could we get them to come and give us a background?
I'm sure Diane Ray Tomaso would be happy to come and talk about, yeah. She died?
No, she didn't.
Oh my goodness, yeah, no, she didn't die. All right, Chris, Chris, I'm sure would love to come and talk about the the work in Denver and.
Yeah, so I think there's lots of interesting ways to get some more information.
If there's a document that may have already been developed or exists that does a little bit of that entity mapping and the overlap, that would also just be great, maybe not necessarily a meeting of a presentation, but they a- along the lines of like, here's the fire department inspectors and here's where we hang out. We're a little bit like this and we're a little bit like this and we overlap in this little band. Maybe somebody's already done that work.
No, like a charge.
That would be so helpful to have like a visual little map, maybe some swimming lanes, like.
Love that. Yeah, glitter.
Do that research for sure.
Like fading.
So just to recap, Paige, you're suggesting we have a blue sky discussion.
Yes.
No, no, let's not get into specifics yet. Let's not have a presentation yet, but let's just have an open discussion amongst the commissioners about what we think our work plan should include. Is that accurate?
Can I, yeah.
Can I add one thing to that, just so we have a little flow on it, so that we get the old plan in our email? So we can at least look over it to see what our guides are before our next meeting, so that we're not in here talking about glitter?
As long as Jared at all believed that the current plan is at all relevant.
Well, we don't have to keep it or throw it out.
We should build a plan around something that's gonna get.
No, I'm just saying we get a, yeah, yeah.
It could be a good basis for the broad kind of topic areas to see what has been done.
Yeah, we we.
But I definitely think if we do go move forward with like a preservation plan, it would be a full update, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that that's the intent currently.
Yes, okay.
Partly given, and everything else aside, that would be the intent.
But just to get an idea of what the old plan is, so that we can sit in this meeting and have more flow to it.
Yeah. Yeah. And I would, go ahead.
It it sounds like, you know, Sarah has some some great ideas regarding framing the conversation, I think, to your point.
Definitely.
So so it is it is blue sky, but yet we we still look at it from a a little bit of a bucket perspective or a framework perspective to to try to guide the.
That feels limiting.
Oh, well. If if we can have a an other category.
Yeah, I was gonna maybe suggest I can, obviously, like let conversation kind of flow as needed, but I was maybe gonna bring a few kind of facilitation type questions, A, when things get into, if there's lulls or to kind of reel everyone back in, because.
The chair does have a list of ideas, right?
I just, well, it's just like my running little list here.
They're color-coded.
Great.
Well, that, these ones are all great. I just picked my favorite color for the day.
There's no color coding on here. But, yeah, when do you think would be, cause I, it sounds like we've got some consensus here that we're interested in a work plan. I I know we're gonna do our brainstorm, but when do you think would be a good timeframe to have a a work plan in place? Like, do you think it would take a couple of months of study session brainstorming or what's realistic?
I wanna say the one when we did it with North Glenn probably took about four or five meetings, but we did do it during the pandemic and completely virtual, so that made things difficult. I would probably say three to four. Um, it could be a, depending on how this first one goes. If we get a lot done from it, we can start drafting. If we don't, it, and we wanna, and you wanna start kind of super broad and then that next one, it's like, okay, well, we got these categories out of that first one, let's start building off of it. Three to four months, probably.
Love that, so like a due date. I love a due date.
Yeah. It might be helpful, I know we've done a work plan, probably multiple work plans in the past when we were the the board, not the commission. I don't know if those records are with you. I certainly could dig through my own files and Kim, you might have some too.
And maybe some ideas.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Right, she did.
Okay, so the due date is September sixteenth, guys? I'm putting it in my calendar.
How about we call it a target date, just in, just in case, just in case we decide to to add something later or get a.
Well, when you adjust the date, that's that's shit for the stars, guys. We like it.
I think it's important to realize this, it needs to be a living document too, as we ask, kind of go.
Right, it needs to be a little row.
So it's it'll, it's never finished in other words.
Yeah, but I think we just need to start with the document.
So if we get that in our emails and the hierarchy of power chart with glitter, we'll be ready to go. And we're still your favorite, right? That's all that I care about.
Finally, just started. Oh, my flip chart's got glitter.
Interestingly, we still have to fly the plane.
What plane?
Well, the plane that.
Yeah.
If somebody came with a COA request, we're responsible for understanding what our current ordinances are and what our current design guidelines are and what, what, how our existing plan fits with the comprehensive plan that was done. So, you know, we don't necessarily. Uh, the comprehensive plan that was done. So, you know, we don't necessarily have a completely blank slate.
Great.
But we can still have glitter.
And, and your flags need to go up.
Oh, yeah, the mid-mod mile.
Yeah, I just think those need to go up, cause the trees are gone.
Yeah, the logo is, it's a, a good logo and if people see that, you know, Littleton's mid-mod mile. If you just put some of those around the mid-mod mile, people are going to say, what is this? You know, hey, that's a cool building. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we can, we can, you know, put that on our kind of in chunks if we want.
I, I like it. We can put glitter on those too, though. Well, great.
Um, and then did you guys wanna talk about? Overlay districts?
Oh, God.
Or is that too much of an extra topic?
And this would be kind of in relation to potential tools that could be used on Littleton Boulevard in terms of that. So to kind of put it into perspective of like size, preservation plan citywide, this portion, Littleton Boulevard. For the overlay.
So what's the question? Is, are, do we support creating an overlay district?
Or do we wanna learn about?
Or just what are the, what are the options?
We would like to know the ones that interfere with our boundary lines.
Well, and, and I think, you know, if, if, if we're in agreement that we wanna quote, do something about Littleton Boulevard, then yeah, an overlay district. Something we should be more familiar with.
Correct.
Correct.
And they've been used successfully, certainly in Denver, just a, a, a close, um, you know, community. That has used overlay districts very successfully.
And Colorado Springs also uses them instead, it like, instead of historic districts, basically, um, in the old north end. And then I think they're, actually their individual landmarks have like a mini, like single lot overlay on them.
So at a thirty thousand foot level, what goes into creating an overlay district? Who creates it? Is this, is it a city council power that?
It is.
We would, we would create a memo suggesting it and the city council would take up that pro- proposal or?
Yeah, it's essentially a, an amendment to your zoning code, like you're putting in a new ordinance in your zoning code that's adopted by city council. So the difference with like a historic district, um, with a historic district, you have to get a certain percentage of property owner approval. Um, and it goes through uh, the process through the property owners and then historic preservation commission and then city council. Um, whereas zoning would be adopted uh, without property owner consent necessarily. But you would want to have some kind of property owner outreach. You don't want like a huge outcry at this zoning change. Um, it's a way to make sure that any like infill um, still fits in with the character of the area. Um, but it doesn't prevent demolition generally. Um, so that's a big difference between a historic district. Um, if, if you're concerned about demolition in the area. This would be great to have in some kind of a resource guide, like if we're not sure what the difference would be. Or how we would go about putting something into motion, that would be great. I don't know, if we have a library of sort of general concepts, ideas. Since you were mentioning Denver, I actually pulled this off their website earlier today, comparing historic districts and conservation overlay districts.
I will, I've actually looked at this. I will send the link out for this too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Think, if I recall, I'm not sure, cause that's a long time ago. When we did the um, comprehensive plan, the addition plan, um, yeah, I don't even remember how many years ago that was. But um, there were conservation or um, uh, overlay districts as a recommendation in that from the consultants.
The, the wording was actually put into the code, the ULUC. So there is that provision within the code that's built in to kind of make this happen.
Good.
Yes.
That's great.
Um, so one thing I wanna mention about conservation overlay districts, we have this new legislation passed. Um, about like uh, allowing greater density in transportation corridors. And I do not think that overlay districts will like allow for historic preservation commission review. Um, because they won't be landmarked um, in the same way that a historic district would be. So you might wanna consider that if, if this area will fall under that legislation.
So you're, yeah, it's the piece that you don't have to upzone if it's designated historic, correct? Is that what it is?
You do have to upzone, but you get extra review over essentially what it looks like.
Gotcha.
I think it's in transportation corridors. Isn't, isn't that what we're talking about? Cause conceivably, you could use them in something that's not a, a transportation corridor.
Right, and just since it's on my mind with this new legislation, I wanna make sure that it's not like.
And how would Littleton Boulevard be classified then?
I'm sure that's the.
We're still trying to determine, yeah, we're, we're reviewing legislation to try to determine. We feel that, we do, we of course know that the um, rail, the light rail stations, we fall into the TOC. We believe that um, the bus line that runs up Broadway, uh, Zero, uh, we believe that that will uh, qualify as well. We're not certain about the one that cuts through Littleton Boulevard, yeah, the east west. So not, I, I can't give you a hundred percent answer on that yet, but yeah, at some point in time, we'll, we'll figure that out.
So with something like a conservation overlay, if the commission didn't have as much oversight. Would that be something where it was um, staff review of uh, COAs that came in? Or staff review of all the structures that are within the overlay?
So in a, in overlay district, you can write in the zoning code that the historic preservation commission will review. Um, you know, any exterior changes and new infill, and that's how Colorado Springs operates. So um, I'm sure there's an example in their um, zoning code that could work. Um, otherwise, you know, zoning review would normally go to your planning commission. Um, so it would have to be like very clear on the roles between the historic preservation commission and your planning commission.
It would be kind of silly to have a, a conservation overlay and historic districts that aren't reviewed by the historic commission.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's doable. It's just, you know, you have to make sure that the different roles are really well laid out.
Yeah. And you know, the really scary part of this is, um, that uh, that's for little, we're talking about a relatively small number of properties. In Littleton, in a couple of years, south of Ridge Road turns forty, you know? And then there's like all of those houses.
There are some that are from the sixties and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
There are a couple of houses down on, yeah.
Our act, yes, where some of those have got to be.
The wave is coming.
You wouldn't knock on the door.
Do you wanna object to the house?
Yeah.
I object.
I did.
To this thing.
Yeah, yeah, I sure did. Josh Cohen, the big house that hasn't been done for thirteen years and walked up there. I was like, what's your plan, dude?
On, on Jackass Hill?
That one.
It seems done now.
He was like, no. He was like, I, I like my privacy. And I was like, that's awesome. Don't build the biggest house on the top of the hill and not be done.
Everybody's looking at you.
Yeah. Yeah, I was like, pu- put a privacy wall up. He was like, there's a gate. And I was like, it's open.
You're right, that is something to think about. There are all these neighborhoods south of Ridge Road that, you know, are built in the seventies. How do you look at that holistically? Do you take neighborhoods and, uh, is there community interest where they want to designate or? Um, we haven't come across that yet, late seventies and.
The nineties are.
I know, they're close. And then that'll be like almost all of Littleton.
It's nineteen ninety-four, it's our state register, so if you have agreed, we just put a whole overlay district over all of Littleton.
Don't worry, I got you. But yeah, I walked up.
We'll get to the point where they'll say, oh, this neighborhood was developed by Shea Homes.
Oh, my goodness.
Isn't that amazing? This is a moment in time that we need to preserve.
I mean, I grew up in a Richmond home.
And you know, you raise a really good point, because there are people who don't. You'll put out the Penny Robbins building, like, why, like, why? But, you know, explain its context, it begins to be interesting and worth preserving. But, you know, absent that, somebody might look at it and go, I don't, I don't get why we're doing this.
Yeah, I think it's, well, you know, now we appreciate mid-mod homes, but it might be difficult to convince people that they're nineteen eighty, you know. Split level or whatever it is, is valuable from a historic preservation standpoint, but of course, it's a huge part of, you know, the development of the state.
Yeah.
It tells a story.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, anything else I can help with?
We've tortured you enough, I'm sure.
Any other resources that would be helpful?
Are there special words that we can use to get to the top of the grant application?
Think about any underrepresented communities.
Oh, interesting.
Okay.
And then.
That wasn't a bullshit question.
Yeah, and then I think if, if you're interested in like sustainability and working with building codes, that would be um, great as well.
Yeah. Not a friendly guy.
Thank you very much.
I sure did.
And then of course, like community letters of support are always nice, not just like, you know, the chair of your preservation commission writing a letter of support for your own grant. Um, which happens quite a bit.
But we really appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and the one thing that um, we always have to remember is that um, the state really wants to help us. And the state really wants to give us grant money. And um, they, they're just wonderful, wonderful resources. And I mean, you can literally call them on the phone and say, I have no clue, and they just help. And it's great.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Also that you know, um, you're not reinventing the wheel, like you were saying. Other local governments may have gone through similar issues or, or dealt with different um, questions that you might have. So I'm always happy to, um, you know, try to connect you with other local governments or just find resources that um, are out there. So feel free to reach out anytime.
Great. So I will end the meeting.
I, I'm on it. I'd love to bring candy to this.
You mean to bring vitamins or something?
Yeah, I need stuff in my mouth or I don't shut up.
I will, I will end the meeting at seven forty-eight. Thanks, everyone.